Welcome, everyone, to the November 15th City of Wyndham Council Meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. First item on the agenda, if there's nothing to add, would be the consent agenda. And there's a lot of items in there. Did anyone want any of those polled for discussion? Seeing none, and I did not have any questions on them, I would ask for the approval of the consent agenda.
I make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Motion, Jason, second by Ginny. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Department heads. Nothing as of yet. Canvas election results. And this will be a resolution. And the results of the election are in front of you and in the packet. Are there any questions for the process?
Okay, Steve? Yep, thank you, Ms. Mayor. So the information comes from the Cowaldwood County Otter Treasure Office. And the election, as you know, is November 8th, held at the Wyndham Community Center. And so those votes were tallied for the Wyndham Ward 1 and Ward 2, Precinct 1 and Precinct 2. And for the members that were up for election, we had four seats, three two-year terms. Councilmember at large, councilmember Ward 1, councilmember Ward 2. And then we had a special election to fill a two-year term in Ward 2 as well. And those election results were obtained from the county and then attached to this resolution for your consideration.
Any questions? Seeing none, it would be in order to have an introduction of that resolution.
I would introduce the resolution canvassing the election returns for the city election and declaring the results of the election.
I'll second.
Introduced by Marv, seconded by Jim. Any discussion or comments? Seeing none. Roll call.
Farag. Quaid.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Grunig.
Yes.
Sherman.
Yes.
Resolution carries. Public hearing miscellaneous assessments, once again a resolution. The information was passed. This is for the publication that we will have a hearing, as noted, and I believe that's on, is that the 6th? Okay, December 6th. Pardon me, Steve?
I believe this is the public hearing. We called for it previously, and so this is the public hearing for the resolution to adopt the assessment roll.
Okay. Then I read that wrong. Adopting an assessment roll. Okay.
Yep, and so these are for the miscellaneous assessments.
And it was previously published?
Yes, that was previously published and approved. The list of the remaining assessment, special assessments that have not yet been paid off, notice had been sent to the property owners, and then the list of remaining amounts are shown in your packet.
Very good. Thank you for clarifying me. Okay, so with that, we are going to open the hearing. Public hearing is now open for comments or questions on the assessment list. Anybody wish to speak? Once again, anyone wish to speak on the miscellaneous assessments? Hearing none, we're going to close the comment period of the public hearing. That is closed. Recording no comments and no written comments, I'm assuming. And so it's up to the council to pass that resolution, adopting the assessment roll for the 2022 miscellaneous special assessments.
I'll make the motion to adopt the assessment role for the 2022 miscellaneous special assessments.
I'll second.
Resolution introduced by Lisa and seconded by Jim. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, we'll ask for a roll call vote.
Nelson.
Yes.
Grunig.
Yes.
Farag.
Yes.
Quaid.
Yes.
Sherman.
Yes.
And that resolution carries. Next on the list is the resolution accepting a donation to the library for use as they see fit, and that is a $40 donation from Sybil Minion to the library. We appreciate that, and the library appreciates it, with the council wish to take action on the resolution.
Introduce this resolution accepting the donation from Sybil Minion.
I'll second.
Introduced by Jason, seconded by Ginny. Thank you. Any discussion? Steve, roll call.
Grunig.
Yes.
Sherman.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yep.
Quaid.
Yes.
Farag.
Yes.
And that carries. Next, we have a request for a street closure. And this is for the ALC Church Living Nativity that they've done annually. I don't know how many years. But a number of years. Okay.
Ever since I was a young kid and participated in it.
Under 10.
That is December 14th of this year. That has been okayed by the Street Department and the Chief of Police. Council wish to take action on the street closure. What was the time on that, Steve?
It's from 5:00 to 7:30, Prospect Avenue between 9th and 10th Streets on December 14th.
Thank you.
I'd make the motion to approve the street closure.
I'll second.
Motion by Marv, seconded by Lisa. Any discussion on a street closure? Not. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. And that carries. Hazardous building at 1453 4th Avenue is the next item, and he's going to come up and go over that. And if I need to run the computer, I will do that. If we have, sure. If we, and Andy will direct me where you want to go on this. And Steve will have his microphone back. He's running the camera. So if we have any questions, we can address them to Andy or Steve. We'll be ready. Okay, Andy, you want to introduce this discussion?
Yep, thank you. Andy Spielman, Building and Zoning Official. So the first item in your packet is a hazardous building recommendation. It's for the, for the property located at 1453 4th Avenue in Wyndham. A little background on this, on February 5th, 2021, a fire substantially damaged the house at this property. Pursuant to state statutes, the house is classified as a hazardous building. Building and zoning office has had numerous correspondences with the owner concerning the hazardous conditions. Since then, on September 7th, the City Council adopted a resolution ordering the repair or removal of the hazardous conditions. Part of that resolution was that the city, if corrections were not made pursuant to the resolution, the city would file a motion for some reinforcement with the court. The corrections were not made as required. So the city attorney initiated the court proceedings, and on April 4th of 2022, the judge issued the order for judgment. That order provided that the city of Wyndham was authorized to go on the property to raise and remove what remained of the burned-out house. That gave us a deadline of midnight of October 31st. So basically, anytime on or after November 1st, the court order would allow the city to go on the property to remove what remained of the burned-out house. Since that time, I've visited the property, and I think I included in your packet a couple photos from that. So this was taken on November, scroll up just a little bit to the top of that photo. There should be a date at the top there. November 8th. So November 8th of 2020, last week, I visited the property, and these are the pictures I took at that time. I think there's one more included in there. That's interior of the house. The first one was on the exterior of the house from the street. And is there one more picture, maybe? That's part of the structure that still remains then in the house. We also included in your packet the court order. That was the order that was signed by the judge allowing the city to execute this on or after November 1st. I think it's important to point out the definition of hazardous property. There is a state definition for hazardous property. That's what we use as kind of a standard when we come to the council and ask for these resolutions. That definition means any property or building which because of inadequate maintenance, dilapidation, physical damage, unsanitary condition, or abandonment constitutes a fire hazard or hazard to the public safety. The staff's recommendation is to ask the city council to authorize city staff to enforce the court order and raise or remove the fire-damaged house, what remains of the fire-damaged house, which, in my opinion, still is in hazardous condition. We did get one estimate from a contractor as far as the expense of this goes. $10,000 to $12,000 was that estimate. That would have to be paid by the city to the contractor. And then that bill would then be sent to the property owner for reimbursement to the city. If it goes unpaid, it would become part of a special assessment, similar to the resolution you passed earlier with the special assessments. With that, I believe the property owner is here. If the council has questions for me or Steve or the property owner, I would be interested in those.
I just want to ask for a bit of clarity. See number seven on the screen right there. I assume since it's part of the actual order, it says shall not raise and remove the garage, which is the structure just, was that to the east? And then that 20-foot by 12-foot building, which is the newer part, which was constructed a few years ago. That would imply, right, that only the actual fired, I mean, not the fired, the damaged structure from the fire would be the raised part. They would be raising everything up to that section. Is that correct?
I believe number seven is referring to two detached accessory buildings that are on the east portion of the property. The detached garage and then another 20-foot by 12-foot building located along the eastern portion of the property. The order is to remove the fire-damaged house, which would be the entire house structure and anything connected to it.
Including that newer section that was built but not suffering from fire itself?
Correct. It's structurally attached to the house, and for the city to remove it, we could become somewhat liable for what then remains if that was damaged through the removal process. If for some reason something remained that then wasn't safe. So the entire house structure, anything attached to it, is part of this order.
Other questions from the council? Any other questions for Andy or for Steve or Mr. Bogle? Anything further, Steve, that should be brought up at this point?
No, I think Andy has covered it sufficiently. There is a court order in place. You know, this is a kind of a courtesy as well to go through this process at this point, since there is a standing order. It is the council's decision whether or not to execute the order or not. That is the council's decision, and then to allocate the funds necessary to do it. So that's the decision point you're at this evening.
Marv?
I would just say that this is a pretty unfortunate situation that Mr. Bogle finds himself in. When the last time that he was here and visited with us, I had every expectation that there would be more done to this point. So maybe that would warrant some type of an extension. But I've driven by there multiple times, and it's pretty obvious that that west wall hasn't been taken down or anything else. So it puts us in a difficult situation to try to give an extension when nothing additional has been done there.
Other council comments? Well, okay. Yep. In order, because if the council did not have questions, that what was allowed, the council would have to suspend the rules and by a motion, second and majority passed, to allow Mr. Bogle to talk.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules and allow Mr. Bogle to talk.
Second.
The motion is made by Jason, seconded by Jim, and I'm going to ask for a roll call vote on that. I'll start with Ginny.
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Marv?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Okay, that carries. Mr. Bogle?
Since the last meeting, I have removed a substantial part of the structure that was damaged. I, last council meeting, I asked permission to, part of the modification of the raised order was to leave the basement floor intact until I could rebuild the basement walls. I was under the impression until yesterday, talking with Andy, that if I removed the ceiling above the basement, I would have to fill it with dirt in order to keep it from being hazardous. So I left that in place to make it property safer. Also, I was told by Andy yesterday that if I had removed that floor and the west wall, I could have gotten a permit to rebuild the basement. Maybe that's the way I understood it anyway, yesterday. But the idea that I've not, I've removed the most dangerous part of the damaged structure, where the ceiling was broken through and hanging down. I did that this summer, and the reason I left it there, I was under the impression last time I was at the council meeting, that you guys are going to go to the judge and have the raised order modified. Obviously, I misunderstood that. But that was my impression, which is why I did not take any more of the structure down. I left what is left there, the west wall and the floor over the basement, in order to keep it safer. Because like I said, I was under the impression that if I moved the floor, I had to fill it with dirt. But Andy told me yesterday that wasn't true, but that was not my understanding. So there's no reason why I shouldn't have permission to remove the rest of that house and then build my basement. If I have to fill the hole or if the whole thing is raised, there's no way I'm going to ever rebuild it. And the city, it's going to cost way more than $10,000 or $12,000, and the city is going to have my property, and you're going to have a big expense. I've already been charged $5,000 for legal fees for asking for an extension to the raised order. So I think it's in the city's interest to let me try to rebuild it. I have so much, all my belongings are in there, and I have no place to put them in the part of the structure that's not damaged. There's two things I built. I built one last year, a big shelter over the back patio. And my, also in the basement is my furnace, my hot water heater, and my water service. And also on the east panel of the house that faces, which has the least damage, it faces underneath my, underneath my lean-to there. It has my electric meter and my electric panel breaker bars that run my freezers in the garage. If that's knocked down, I'll go have four freezers full of rotten food. And at that point, I would probably walk away from the whole property, and the city would be, city would be, have a substantial job and expense to clean up the whole property. So I think it's in the city's best interest and obviously in mine. I've lived there for 20 years and paid taxes. And as far as it being hazardous, sure, it maybe meets some standard of a hazardous structure, but it's not that dangerous. Nobody's going to come in there. The floor is completely covered, and I left the west wall in order to keep it safer, to make it more secure. I can take those two items down, and then according to Andy yesterday, I could have gotten the raised order modified and got a permit to build the basement. The basement needs to just be rebuilt on the north and a small section on the south, and maybe some on the west. And I know how to lay block.
I'm curious as to if there is a way to release the city from liability or potential liability for that part of the structure that's new. The, it was attached, yes, on that eastern side of the actual house. And kind of modify it. I just, I just feel like there's, if there's no, if there's a way to make it so there's no liability on the city's part at all, to raise the part that's actually broken and burnt out and everything, that makes sense completely. But I don't know if that's a possibility. So I'm not going to speak too strongly on that. Yes.
Steve?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor and Councilmember Sherman. When Andy and I met with city attorney, we had that exact question. You know, what, you know, what would eventually happen if this was, you know, permitted? And he said that he could share his legal opinion is that it creates a liability for the city, and it just needs to go. I believe that was the words that we got from the city attorney. Andy, correct me if I'm wrong, but he felt there'd be liability there. The excavator, if they come in to do it, they also face a liability. What if they inadvertently damage something that's left to be, you know, standing? They would incur some possibility of liability, and so the city attorney just didn't feel that that was worthwhile to do that, so.
Yeah, I think Steve covered it well. The other thing is we just, it's just impossible to see how it's built at this point. Kind of all along, we've been saying if that, if that's the plan to save that, then Mr. Bogle would have to remove everything up to it. Because if, if the city has to come in and execute this court order, there's really no way we can separate that and leave that structure without damaging it or the potential of damaging it, or just, at this point, it's just unknown how it's built and how everything's attached and put together.
Was my understanding, the last time you were here, that everything was explained to you, Mike, what you had to do as far as removing any part of the house that had, from the part that you wanted to save? That's the way it was explained, at least the way I thought. And as far as the floor or anything like that, I don't know. But I think that, if I remember correctly, that west wall was supposed to be something done with. Just 2x4 up, I don't think is safe personally. I wouldn't let my grandchildren go in there, I'll tell you that. And I certainly let nobody else's if I could help it. And that is, that is a fear of mine.
The reason I left the west wall and the floor was, at the last council meeting, I was under the impression that Steve was going to go to the judge and get the raised order modified. And if I didn't know, if I didn't know that I didn't have to fill the garage or the basement with dirt, I would have removed that floor. But I didn't learn that until yesterday. So it'd be nice if I could at least get an extension to do that part.
Mr. Bogle? And I'm going to interject here. That is not what was said. You can be clarified by the minutes of the city council meetings. That information was discussed. It was told to you. I'm sorry, but that was what was said at that meeting. And, okay? And I'm, and I'm sorry. Yep.
Yeah.
No. But the situation that we have is a court order was issued, okay? And that the council has the ability now to take care of the hazardous condition that resides within our community. The council needs to take action, one way or another, if this property is going to be raised or they have the ability to make an extension, is my understanding. Is that correct, Steve?
Your decision is to execute the order as the order stands, not execute the order, instruct us to go to the court to modify the order. Those are really your three options.
And to do that, we're looking at another year in order to do this. I'm, I'll go on record as saying I'm not in favor of this. I don't have a vote on this council, but this is a hazard to our community. Mr. Bogle, it's your safety, it's a public safety that this council will make their decision on. And if they feel that it's not a hazard, they should state so. But if it's the definitions, has not been completed. And so I think the council has to take this serious consideration. We've had other homes that, in town that have burned, that have been raised.
Is there, is there any way that, give him the opportunity to move his service to his garage? At least, we still have power for his T-freezes, so he doesn't have to worry about that? Or, because I was under the understanding that if we didn't do it, we had to go all back through court, and everything had to be started all over completely with a new judge order, try to get a court date, try to, the whole nine yards. From the calls that I'm getting and the people that, and I've only had one of this been passed by bedtime, but it wasn't a very pleasant one. And, you know, so I guess that's where I'm at, too.
Yeah, as far as the electric meter goes, before it's raised, obviously, the city would disconnect that. And then Mr. Bogle could request that to be placed, a new service be placed on the garage. That, that could be done. That would have to be done before the house is raised anyways. So it would be disconnected, and at that time, he could go through the process and request that the service be attached to the garage. If, you know, the last time, Mr. Bogle garage. If, you know, the last time Mr. Bogle was at the council, he was requesting the order be modified so that he could obtain a building permit to construct the basement. And so that, that's what would have to happen. If he rebuilds, we can't issue a building permit when we have a standing court order on a hazardous building. So the options were essentially remove the hazardous condition, the, the floor that remains, the foundation wall, that west wall, if he wanted to try and save the additions, he could have at that time. And then either, either fill the excavated hole with dirt, or at that time, we maybe could have determined that you've removed the hazardous condition. If he would have, you know, came forward with the building permit application and plans to rebuild, at that time, it would have just turned into a normal building permit with a, with an open excavation. And there'd be some, you know, some timeframe in line with the, the construction. But the, the option to do nothing wasn't really provided for in the court order that we have.
In fact, I think that I had raised the question about if it was modified and you were, you were talking then about you had the money to rebuild and so forth, or however you were gonna work it, I don't know. But you're going past the actual court date of 31st. So something would have to be done there. And I just don't, myself, I just, I think it's impossible.
Okay. I was thinking of a quick thought. So if the raise order goes through, how soon are we talking? Is there any way, like in, in a few days, for Mr. Bogle to clear away from that new addition, clear enough, far enough back that the liability could be through a signature released for the city so that the city would not have to get nearer than five feet or 10 feet from that newer addition? Because it's quite expensive. I know that. It's in the thousands of dollars and such.
My question would be to the liability of the city for allowing the rest of it to stand.
Yeah, the, the contractor that I talked to, his tentative schedule verbally now is January. So if, if we move forward tonight, just, it's probably going to be some time before we have a contractor that's able to mobilize and do the work. If it's completely removed from the addition, I don't, the city attorney's recommendation is that leaving it would open the door for some sort of liability for the city. Now, if Mr. Bogle does a substantial amount of work to remove the burned out structure from the addition, if the contractor we hire feels comfortable removing the remaining with leaving it, and at that point, maybe we can reassess it and get the city attorney's opinion. But that's all speculation and under a lot of assumptions. The, the recommendation right now is, is leaving that structure if we raise the rest of it, puts liability on the city for what remains.
I, I agree. It's an unfortunate situation. However, it's been almost two years. You know, we've had many people, you know, that are very upset about that. They're afraid of that structure. And I realize you're trying to do this rebuild basically by yourself. And how much longer is that going to be? And nothing really has been done up until basically getting a court order. I just feel like it's, it's gotta be removed.
How upset will people be if they?
There's public assistance that can help you find a place to live.
And I have to work, I have to work, I have to work many days. One reason it took me two years. One, first of all, I worked almost a year for, for a structural engineer. Then I waited another year thinking I was gonna get this court order modified. That's why I removed all the overhead stuff. It was a huge job this summer. That's why I moved it to remove the hazard. I left this roof, I left the ceiling on the basement to make it less hazardous. I thought an open pit. Like I say, I was under the impression that if I removed that, I had to fill it with dirt. Now Andy told me I was wrong about that yesterday. But that was my impression, which is why I left it there. I would like at least some time to find a place. It's not easy to find a place. And I have to move. I've got a lot of stuff to move.
Mr. Bogle, and you don't have to answer this question if you don't want to. Where are you living now?
That's where I sleep. I sleep in the addition. Because I have no place else to go. If that, if I wasn't there, I would maybe be on somebody's lawn. I don't know. But it, there's a clause in the constitution that calls self-defense. I live there to defend myself from the cold. That's self-defense. It's very livable. It's very comfortable.
It is my understanding that you're residing somewhere else.
I did for most of the time.
Okay. And so that is true, that you're residing somewhere else.
I don't understand the question.
You said, my understanding is that you are living at a different location.
Than 1453?
Yes.
No, I'm living there. I have my kitchen there, my bed's there, my heater's there.
Okay.
It's better than sleeping on the ground outside, that's for sure, in a tent.
This is an unfortunate situation that there was a fire. It's even more unfortunate that there was an insurance to help you out with all this. In light of all the discussions and everything where we're at, I'm gonna make a motion that we execute the order.
I will second.
Okay, motion's been made by Ginny, seconded by Marv, to execute the order. Further discussion by the council.
Part of my conundrum is the, the seeming inability to separate liability of the city from that addition. I know what the, the raise order says. I went through the whole thing. It just seems that there's gotta be some legal document or instrument that could relieve the city completely of any liability. Even though it might be, might be in some people's judgment, not easy. But it seems that we should be able to do that, especially if Mr. Bogle was willing to sign said instrument. Even though the raise order, like if we could, obviously, the raise order wouldn't go into effect possibly until January. If the, I know it's an if, but if we could somehow find a way to get that liability, that's the thing that's kind of hanging on me, is there's gotta be a way. Because that, because I've seen with my own eyes, the addition, I've walked all around it. The burnt out has to be gone, true. But that addition has not been touched. I've seen it. I smelled it. I was there several occasions. So that's my conundrum, just so the council knows.
Part of our responsibility is for Mr. Bogle, too, is his safety of attempting to live there. And I'm, I'm.
It's a lot more hazardous to live outside in the winter time than it is there. The chances of liability are so slim. But the chances of you guys spending way more money than you ever will get out of my property is almost 100%. So like I say, it's in the city's interest to work with me, whatever it takes. It's gonna cost the taxpayer a whole bunch of money. Plus, I'm gonna be, what, what about the liability of me freezing to death? I mean, I know, it sounds like a joke, and it maybe is. But the idea that you're worried about, you seem, I'm a citizen here. I have the United States. I have constitutional rights. And one of them is life, liberty, and property. And you guys are trying to take almost all three away from me for some small chance, like a minuscule chance, that somebody's gonna get hurt there and sue the city. The chances of that are so slim, it's almost none. Like, almost like winning the lottery.
This property has been a nuisance for almost two years, as stated. And the council has made a motion to execute the order and a second.
I take into consideration all the neighbors around there also. That, those are the people that are calling me. And I don't know, I, if we don't do something, are we putting ourselves in a position where we can't do anything?
Well, I think the, the concern also here is, I have not heard, the comments that were made to me about this property were not in favor of delaying. And that the comments were, it should have been done a long time ago. Due process, I believe, has been made. Opportunities to conclude this issue have been offered, offered actually significant time in the court order. And the city of Wyndham, excuse me, the city of Wyndham Council has a motion and a second on the table. Okay? And in just a moment, if the council does no more comments, I'm gonna ask for action on that. And it'll be by a roll call. And I'm gonna go off Steve's list. Any final comments from the council? Hearing non, Sherman.
Hi.
Nelson.
Yes.
Grunick.
Yes.
Farag.
Yes.
Quaid.
Yes.
This is the judgment of the city council that is, is to execute the court order on a four to one vote. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. We are on to the next agenda item.
Okay, the next one is mine as well. So the next item I've included in your packet is a action item. We're requesting that the council approve a motion to engage SEH Engineering to complete fieldwork required to update the Perkins Creek floodplain, floodplain model and hydrology. This issue came up, I shouldn't say issue, but this item is coming because in 2021, the city was part of a floodplain remapping event. FEMA and MNDNR worked together to remap all of Cottonwood County. That, what that did was it, it reevaluated actual ground elevations based on LiDAR. So we could, we could more, in, in more detail delineate the floodplain profile, the area that would be inundated by water if we hit the 100-year flood elevation. That was not a re-study of the river or Perkins Creek. Included in your packet, I've got a memo from the Department of Natural Resources. This kind of gives a good background of why this project is happening, who initiated the project, and how it's being funded. So as a result of that work, the DNR found that there was, there was, there was some disconnect between where the county map, which is a Zone A, and the city map, which is a Zone AE. When they, when they did the new studying of the county map, there was a disconnect in the flood elevations. And they thought, oh, maybe that's because this is based on new data, new technology, and we're looking at a 1970s technology map that the city has. So there was a disconnect there. They also looked at the dam removal project that was never thoroughly, I shouldn't say thoroughly, but that was never studied fully when it was removed. At the time they did the dam removal project, they did what's called a no-rise certificate, which is basically just looking to make sure that if they remove the dam, there won't be a negative impact on, on the floodplain. So those two points led the DNR to initiate a remodel of the Des Moines River going through town. It'll start just north of city limits. It'll follow the river all the way through town, all the way to the Cottonwood County border, just outside of, of the city of Wyndham. What they're doing is called the Better Data LOMAR. Generally, LOMARs is a letter of map revision. That's the, it's a FEMA, a FEMA letter that's sent out when you revise your floodplain map. Generally, they're done if there's bridges that are replaced, or dams removed, or some other structure, some physical thing that happens to the river that they're re-studying it. That's not what we're doing here. This is just a Better Data LOMAR, which means we have a lot better data available to us now than we did when this, this map was, was previously done. So on October 14th, I believe it was October 14th, they had their kickoff meeting. I was present for that meeting. And that's when I really realized what the scope of this work was, what they were trying to do. And a big question that I had was, why are we not including Perkins Creek? There's a little over 100 parcels along Perkins Creek that are affected by the floodplain. If I include the confluence area of Des Moines River and Perkins Creek, it's closer to 130 properties that are potentially affected by the floodplain. The, since the DNR is working with the Army Corps of Engineers and are participating in a FEMA grant program, they weren't able to expand the scope of their project. So I asked then if the city could partner with them in a project. Basically, if the city does the fieldwork, does the on-ground work to get the data to them, if there would be some cost savings or efficiencies that the city would see by including Perkins Creek in this. They, they were willing to do that. So my next call was to Rachel Pickelman with SEH. Rachel was the, the lead engineer that helped us with the last project that we did. She's very familiar with Wyndham, very familiar with our floodplain. They were, they were very helpful for us in this last revision that we did with, with getting what we felt was a, a good product. The initial conversation I had with Rachel was basically just, hey, what would it cost to survey Perkins Creek? That led probably more questions than I had answers for. So last Wednesday, Rachel facilitated a meeting with, with DNR representatives. I think FEMA was invited to the meeting, but they're, they're busy dealing with hurricane stuff, I guess, so they're busy. But the DNR has some good information on Perkins Creek right now. They just finished up a year or two ago with a, a study of Perkins Creek. They did a study of the Warren Lake Dam. And they looked at how the dam affects Perkins Creek. And they did some field surveying. They did some hydrology work. And so after that meeting, Rachel had a good understanding of what DNR had for information. Since we're kind of partnering with DNR, they're willing to provide us all the information that they have. They're, they're willing to take all of our data that we collect. We would submit it to the DNR for review. And then they would submit it to FEMA as one full package. That's gonna save the city a substantial amount of time and money compared to if we did this project on its own. At least 30% cost savings is what Rachel estimated if we, if the city were to just take on this project on its own. So with that, and I, I was hoping to get a little bit better cost estimates before the meeting tonight. And I did just get them at 4:30 today. the meeting tonight, and I did just get them at 4:30 today. The, uh, the final number that Rachel gave me was $39,000 to complete the, uh, the, the fieldwork, the study work that's needed. And then they will, uh, they'll then hand that over to the D N R, and then the D N R will submit it to FEMA. S E H will be involved a little bit through the FEMA review, but for the most part, once we hand it over to the D N R, they're gonna take it and, and the review and the back and forth process and actually, um, going through the LOMAR process and adopting the new maps would be done by, by the D N R. So the requested action is for the, the city council to approve engaging in S E H for this project at a cost of up to $39,000. And Steve was available for all these meetings if you had more to add? He says no.
Any questions? That was a lot of information quickly, and I know this came up fast, but, uh, I was involved with a little bit of the discussion or updated along the way. I think it's, um, I think the benefit to the community at this time warrants this. You know, possible reductions in, uh, uh, you know, with a decrease of the floodway, there's potential for decreases to, uh, quite a few properties along Perkins Creek and, and also, I guess, the whole study has potential along the river also, correct?
Yeah, so I, I guess I didn't mention that, but what, what this would do is a, a full study of the, the flows, the hydrology, the flood elevation, and the floodway delineation. So what didn't change last time was the flood elevations. If, if the flood elevation was 1,350 feet, that stayed the same. All we looked at was what land would actually be inundated by water if we hit that elevation. This will look at the actual base flood elevation. What D N R noticed as a disconnect north of town, there's, there's a big disconnect in Wyndham right around the, uh, the Cottonwood Vet Clinic, um, where their driveway is and their bridge is. That's another area where we transitioned from an AE zone to an A-zone, which we don't need to get into that, but there's a, I'm looking at the map now, and there's almost a six-foot difference in flood elevation in a very short period of time there. That, that's the exact disconnect that the D N R saw, that they initiated the river study. I noticed that disconnect when we were going through the last mapping process. I, I called it out, and the answer I got was, we're not doing a new model, we're not doing a new study, there's nothing we can do about it. There's also a disconnect, uh, mostly along highways, or 17th Street by the high school, where the floodway actually extends beyond the flood fringe zone, which is, again, it's a, it's a disconnect in the map. They couldn't change it the last time around because we're not doing a new study, that's not the scope of this work, we can't change the floodway. So there's properties there that are, are actually mapped in the floodway that I don't feel, and I think, I think the D N R agreed at the time, that they probably shouldn't even be in the mapped flood, floodway, or flood fringe area even. And the floodway is a very restrictive zone where there's really no fill, no building, it's really unusable land. So those are just two areas of disconnect that I noticed the last time that I was a little bit frustrated, we couldn't get cleared up when we were going through this process then. Which is a lot of the reason that I, I push the issue with the D N R now to try and get this included in their scope of work. The fact that D N R is willing to work with us on this and share the information and the data that they have now is, is very valuable.
I think that's wonderful. Thank you for all the hard work, but I think it's wonderful that we can save so much, and it's, uh, sounds like a win-win all the way around, so.
I would just add that Wyndham is a river town, so having updated information is truly invaluable, especially for the homeowners and the buyers and the sellers of property that are looking at property in that area, so I would be, I would be for it.
And I just think, you know, we're getting the resources of valuable information used here, so at 39,000, if we weren't a part of this and doing this and had to do this all on our own, we're looking at way more costs, right?
39,000 plus 30%-ish, plus $7,000 to $8,000 worth of survey work that was in her initial cost estimate, that now after confirming with the D N R that they have that information for us, so yeah, it's significant. Steve says 60.
Okay, um, sounds like the council may be favorable on this. I will say that the $39,000 has to come from somewhere. There, um, you know, as far as how this affects our budget, at this point, uh, because we did have a budget meeting earlier, uh, this would have to then, uh, come out of the reserve funds if the council approves this. That calculation was done, and it would still leave us at the upper end of our reserve, correct, Steve? Okay, he's nodding yes. That it would be in that 60% range of, of the annual budget, so of our goals, I guess. So, um, I think that is warranted to just understand, and that if you approve this, Steve, would you want that part of the motion that we, right now, to fund it? Yep, okay. So Steve says if the motion's made, it should be also noted in that motion that it'd be funded out of general fund reserve. Okay?
I have a question. Andy, are these mostly private properties, or is there any of the Wyndham's property in there, or anything that can be developed? You know, you know, to help as far as eventually, uh, the city's money?
Sorry, mostly private properties. It does come down to the arena, so it affects some of the arena property. I think there's a lift station that we have that's in it, but mostly, mostly private
Well, I would make a motion to approve the floodplain update study and, and pay for it with the general fund reserve dollars.
Motion by Marv, second, I didn't catch that. Jim? Nope? Jason did. Well, Jason. I'll take Jason, yeah, arm wrestle for it. Okay, any further discussion or questions? Okay, good discussion, I appreciate that presentation, and I think it is valuable for the community, as everyone's pretty much stated. So with that, I'll call for the call. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Andy.
Thank you.
We'll let Steve come back and have a seat here and write all your notes. All right. You should just take that back there next time, Steve. Yeah, all right. Okay. We need to, uh, call for a public hearing, um, this next topic regarding the Police Department drones. Chief Peterson's here. He's, um, supplied us with a wealth of, wealth of, uh, information in the packet with all the, what you can do and what you can't do, so it's up to you now, chief.
In your packet, you have a request from me requesting a public hearing for the next meeting. Minnesota statute requires before a police drone can be used, that public comment should be allowed. That's the reason for the request for public hearing. With that being said, you also have our policy that has been approved by the city, Wyndham City Attorney, as well as Minnesota statute. The drone is simply, can't be used for, it's limited to what it can be used for, and the statute and our policy supply that information. We can't just put it up into the air for any reason at all. We also have reporting requirements to the B C A at the beginning of every year, and we have to maintain records of what we've used the drone for and what dates and times it was up there. With all that being said, I would be, I'll entertain any questions you might have.
Council questions?
No so much of a question as I have a comment. I, I think, to me, makes a lot of sense in our modern day to have that to make your job easier and even safer in some contexts.
Well, I'd like to also take this time to thank you for allowing us to purchase that. We have technology that can potentially save someone's life, and I want to thank you for providing the funding for that.
Any other comments on that? Don't go away yet. If this passes, I want to ask you one more question. Okay. We have a resolution before the council. Calling for the public hearing.
I would introduce a resolution, calling for a public hearing regarding the use of unmanned aerial vehicles, drones, from the police department.
I'll second.
Resolution introduced by Jason, second by Jenny. One question for Steve. Steve, the, the attachment stuff, the public can look at the city website as far as that, that will not be part of the publication, so everything that, that Scott is referring to in the requirements of this is published on the city website in the minutes.
Yep, it's all, it's in, it's in the council packet, it'll be, this discussion is in the minutes, and I think there's also, you've got it posted.
Once this is approved through a public comment, it also is mandatory, it has to be on our website. Our policy does, and that's our intention, once that process is completed, it'll go there.
Okay, very good.
And then just to add on to it, it, the statute calls for accepting public comment, and so I know notice was given in the local newspaper, and, but we're going a step further by officially calling for a public hearing, getting that out there, having that, so we're just, we're actually doing extra steps than are, than are required. So we just figured, you know, better error on the side of having more opportunity for input and comment than skating by on the letter of the law, so we are going that extra step.
No, I think so, and I've seen a lot of different things on privacy and sort of, that sort of thing, and I think that's an opportunity if the public has questions to, for comments is to, to ask.
And I think if the public, for any who do read the actual policy, it will alleviate a lot of concerns, because it's pretty clear.
Okay, with that, any further comments? I'll ask for a roll call. Farag.
Yes.
Sherman.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Quaid.
Yes.
Grunig.
Yes.
Scott, I heard today that it was posted on Facebook that your patrol dog, could you please?
I'd be happy to comment on that. I had a previous request from council member Quaid, so I'd be happy to talk about it. Saturday night, our police K-9 unit, which consists of Officer Lewis Norrell and our K-9 Bruno, who's a German Shepherd, were requested by the Jackson County Sheriff's Office for assistance in regards to a individual who had fled from them in a vehicle pursuit. He was in the Highland Woods area. In the course of the investigation, our K-9 unit came in contact with this individual. He fled from our K-9 unit. Our K-9 was released and apprehended him. We're very proud of Officer Norrell and very proud of Bruno. This was a, providing good assistance to our neighbors, but also it protected the residents of that area too. So we're very proud, and I've given kudos to both of them. So I was, wanted to comment, I'm glad that you brought it up, because I intended to say something. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments for Scott, besides keep up the good work?
Yes, keep up the good work, and we can officially say that the, the dog's bite is worse than the bark, so.
I mean, yes.
Steve mentioned that take a bite out of crime. Okay, very good. Very good on both your parts. Okay. Did we call for, yes, we did, we got that. Okay. Next, um, we have quite a few personnel committee recommendations. And, okay, our ambulance department is not here, so Steve, would you go over that, uh, well, no, I understand. Did you want Steve to go over that list, the E M T one, or how much did?
I want to give her to the same.
Okay, thank you, Marv.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, Councilman Grunig. So yeah, there were, Personnel Committee met, and there were a number of items up for discussion. What's in your packet? The ambulance department during the budget workshops had talked about the need to retain and recruit additional help for our service. We only have one, um, full-time paid employee, permanent employee, the rest are volunteer on-call. And so the ambulance director had kind of done a survey of area departments, ambulance services, and come up with some information that was shared with Personnel Committee, and so the proposal was to increase on-call pay from $3.50 an hour to $5.00 an hour, and the run-call pay from $1,850 to $20 an hour. That would put us in the median of our other area services, and so, yeah. And then the, uh, the E M T, uh, or I'm sorry, E M R pay, we do 75% of whatever the E M T pay is, so that would apply to both those on-call and to the call or service, run service time, so.
And this is a self-supporting, as indicated in the memo too. And so we want to keep them in good position to still be able to provide services, um, still with the revenue to update their equipment as needed, so I think it's, uh, very wise to take a look at that cost associated with that. So any other, any comments from the council or questions? If not, entertain a motion to approve that.
I'll make a motion to improve the on-call and run pay rate for the E M Ts.
I'll second.
Motion by Jenny, second by Lisa. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we'll tackle the community center and the recommendation from the Personnel Committee led by Marv Grunig.
I would say that, uh, in all of these, it's just, uh, the Personnel Committee's action, trying to remain competitive in what we're dealing with, with inflation and open part-time positions, and trying to retain staff and fill part-time positions. So this is basically the reaction that the committee had and the recommendations.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, Council, the second item is a community center part-time. Over the last few years, you've authorized a number of on-call bartenders and on-call staff to come in and help flip the gym, so to speak, from between events. The bartenders we're having pretty good luck with, and that's gonna kind of continue as, as is. However, finding help to get all the events of basically set up and flipped from one to the other is wearing pretty thin, and we're not being able to find on-call people to come in. So the community center director, Tim Schneider, had made the request, again during budget time, and then with Personnel Committee, to consider having a permanent part-time position, 24 to 30 hours a week. That would then give us the opportunity to have a, an employee on a regular ability to schedule them, and then also be able to allow us to pay a little bit more, because it would be within our bargaining unit, and that has a slightly higher pay scale than what we were doing. So, Mr. Schneider had said they'd kind of focus on Monday, Thursdays, and weekends. Reason for that is Mondays are after a weekend event, then it's all clean up and tear down on Mondays. Thursdays is get everything set up, so if somebody's coming in for a wedding, they have Friday to decorate, and so they're not competing with people who are in decorating, and then weekends for the obvious reasons that we have a lot of events. He pointed out that last, this last year of the 52 Saturdays in the year, they had events on 50 of them. And with the three-person staff plus run-call, that is very taxing to that, to that group. And one of the other things that Mr. Schneider pointed And one of the other things that Mr. Schneider pointed out, and again, it was a board, the Community Center Commission goal, as well as the council goal, was to have the community center raise revenue. Well, you do that through booking more events. Well, they were successful in booking all those events, which is then causing the need for additional staffing. And so the request is to advertise for a permanent part-time position. We do have a shared arena community center maintenance position within our bargaining unit, and that was the one we would be seeking to fill because then there'd be some flexibility to maybe flex that person down to the arena during the community center slow time, which there's not a slow, slow time, but a slower time, which is usually October to April. But then that would then kind of offset by the community, or the arena's very, very busy time, which is October through April due to figure skating, hockey and those events. So it would work out pretty well to maybe share that. I did speak with the arena director as well, and he'd certainly be welcome to accepting any help we can move his way, so.
One other comment, I think that the Personnel Committee was able to see is that over the past couple of years, I guess our past COVID time, the revenue, the income is in the expense, are coming closer together. We're not losing, I shouldn't say losing. We don't have to come up, it's getting closer. The community center will likely never break even, right? It's an amenity that the community supports. The council's always supported, but it's getting closer. So that was the goal, challenge to the community center board. I think they're doing a good job. So it is getting better. So with having the calendar full is a goal of not only community center, but in line with the council thoughts. So I, I think that's warranted to be approved as well. So with that, council action.
I'd make the motion to authorize the community center to advertise for a permanent part-time community center arena maintenance position.
I'll second.
Motion, Marv, seconded by Lisa. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Motion carries. We are on to the liquor store part-time clerk.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You've seen liquor store manager in here on a fairly steady basis, hiring part-time liquor clerks that we've had not real good success in hanging on to them, given the current job market out there. There's always some other place that's paying a little bit more. So we've cycled through a staggering number of liquor clerks over the last couple of years. The folks we have are very good. However, they don't want to work all the time. Usually it's a second job for some folks and they want, you know, a few shifts here and there and not to be scheduled all of the time. So again, kind of the same thing as the community center, to be competitive in the labor market. The liquor store is asking to fill, again, a bargaining unit position that we already have, a permanent part-time position for 15 to 29 hours a week that they can then schedule that person out and have kind of more of a set schedule and more of an ability to schedule those folks rather than having that kind of temporary or seasonal type of clerk. Again, being in the bargaining unit allows them to pay a little bit more for that position and attract some other candidates, so.
Any comments from the council or action?
I'll make a motion to approve the, her advertising for a part-time position for the liquor store.
I'd second that.
And that's full-time, part-time. Permanent, that's the word. Permanent, part-time. Okay. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Did you get the motion seconded? Okay, thank you. Next one would be the, a long list, but of personnel policy updates. Steve had them highlighted for us so we could see all that in the document that was sent out. So did you want to review it in general? What do you think, Marv?
Yeah, I can just go over it in general. This one, we can kind of, I'm going to give the state some credit. We can amend our personnel policy because of some of the changes the state had on THC. Again, that's legally in the state of Minnesota, but is not federally recognized. It is still on the list of drugs on federal side. It also applies to CDL holders and anyone who carries a firearm. And so with the state's action last year, it created a number of personnel issues within the state. And so many cities are having to amend your personnel policy to include, because we had drugs and alcohol and THC, it's not technically a drug because it's now a permitted substance, but it is also an intoxicant. So it's much like alcohol, if someone were to report to work under the influence. But we needed to specify that in our policy. So what I've done is gone through the personnel policy and found a number of areas where we needed to add some language. I did also talk with the League of Minnesota Cities to make sure we were going the right direction on this. And so they had some input into this. So we have had a second set of eyes on it. Again, this in item 10, and this is within our workplace policy, we listed intoxicant in a state or federally recognized controlled substance. So that would put THC, because it's a federally recognized substance, on that list and be specific about it. Then we also had just a cleanup in our safety item section, just to very distinctly clarify, employers are not to use cell phones while operating vehicle unless hands-free technology is used. That was a request from our MMUI Safety Committee and the League of Minnesota Cities to have that very clearly delineated within our policy. And then again, we get down to some other drug and alcohol testing section. And again, this was modified to say drug and that you say drug or controlled substance, but now it's drug, state or federal controlled substance again to, to add that. Same thing in the drug and alcohol free policy there, you can see those changes. And that kind of goes throughout that, that section. And then the other item that we had was under travel for business meals. We've seen, pointed out earlier, a lot of inflation, things like that going up. And so our old policy had just a set amount in there that we would visit on occasion. And so what we did is brought to the Personnel Commission or Committee a request to set them and have it set by General, United States General Services Administration. That's a federal agency. They set out these rates for mileage and meal reimbursement, per diem reimbursements, things like that. And they do it by zip code nationally. And so the numbers for 56101, which is Wyndham zip code, is 13 for breakfast, 15 for lunch, 26 for supper. And those then would be backed up by receipts obviously for that. But then we also had included then this, that that, those numbers can be adjusted as GSA adjusts their numbers rather than coming back to the commission and, or the committee and the council every time. Kind of like the mileage rate, the IRS mileage rate, they set it. Sometimes they modify it, but that just kind of floats as that IRS rate changes. We didn't have that in the meal section, so we did that so we can keep up with it. And so that was added. And then again, just under tolls, we added must-have receipt too, but we don't have too much of that. But again, it's a clarification item. So those were the main portions of this policy to be updated.
Thank you, Steve. Thanks for getting all that in order. Counsel was to take action, or do you have questions first?
I'd make a motion to accept the personal policy updates.
I'll second.
Motion by Jason, second by Lisa. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that carries. Well, another, this is on the agenda, EDA hiring recommendations. Just Steve, any updates on that topic?
For, we discussed at the EDA meeting, but in the memo on November 9th, the interview committee consisting of Ryan McTamara, who's EDA president, Mayor Jones, Councilmember Grunig and Tom Ridden from the Personnel Committee, we did interview a candidate for EDA, the very, very good candidate. We did, the committee did vote to make an offer to said candidate. That person has tentatively accepted it. They are going to be in town this, at the end of the week to look for housing and apartment and things like that. And so if they can get that secured, they will formally accept the position. We've talked about salary and things like that. So keep your fingers crossed that this all works out for them. But we don't have the assigned document for your action this evening. And so you'll either, you know, go to the next council meeting for approval or if you want to act at some in-between amount of time, that's up to you. But, you know, kind of just with the, how the holidays fall, if he comes in this week, looks for an apartment, lets me know Monday, we're to the 21st. That week is Thanksgiving, then council's the next week. And then by the time he gives notice, two or three weeks, we're into Christmas holiday. So my anticipation, he would probably start January 3rd. If we had this this evening, we were probably talking about the 12th or so of December. So it's, it's about a two and a half week difference. Combination of things, one, him needing more time to secure housing and then two, just kind of our council meetings fall. So, but that's the update.
Steve, I would, I would like to, I sent you a text on this. I didn't have a response. I don't think Steve liked it. But I, I do want to say that as it has been, we have a good candidate. I truly believe that. And I would like to leave that opportunity open and schedule a special meeting in one week from today and take action on this one item. That's the only item I would have on it if the council is willing to do that. I do not have a time in mind, but whatever would be convenient for the council, because he, he did want it that week, you know, in, in that response. So I'd like to get that going as soon as possible if the council conscurse. And are you open to that?
I am.
I'm seeing a consensus of nods. So any preference on time? I mean, we could do a quick one early, right after everybody gets home from work or whatever. Could be noon. We're open to it. Not for some.
Yeah, I don't get home till four or after.
Lisa, what time? Okay. Can you do a five, you think? Five, one week from today.
What, Tuesday? At 5:00 PM, right?
What is the date?
November 22nd.
Okay, very good. Okay, thank you. And I sure hope he finds a location to, for housing soon. So. Okay. Okay. New business. Old business. Contractor payments. There's one in the bill. This is for $36,462.80. This is for airport crack seal. Is there a motion to approve that contractor payment?
Is there some type of engineer sign off on this?
Yes, they have signed the form on the back page of it here, so. Or, yep, right here, short, Lindsey Wright had signed off on it, so. And this, this, it's the only pay request we'll have on it. It was one project came in, did it in and out within the week. So this is the sole one that you'll have. And just again, for everybody's benefit, these are 90% federally funded, so it'll be a reimbursement to us for the vast majority of this.
I'd make a motion to approve this payment request.
I'll second it.
Motion, Jason, second Jim. To approve that contractor payment? Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I did want to make one, I'm going to go first on council comments actually tonight, or somebody else will probably take this actually. And this is giving credit to the council that we did have a budget session prior to this meeting. It was a, a posted meeting and it was to have a proposed budget levy that the council approved. The maximum that the council could go was 8%. They came in at 7.62%. And the dollar amount that was included in that motion, that Steve's going to read for me maybe? Thank you, Steve. There will be a public comment accepted at the December 6th council meeting. That's also the truth and taxation and the budget meeting. So that is on December 6th. If you'd like to make comment, either written or in person, that will be available for the public. So I think the council funded a lot of critical things within that amount that's, that they're, they considered. So I think the council did a good job on that. I appreciate that and their time on the whole budget process so far. So with that, let's go to Jim.
Really have anything other than we got a lot done and it's all was unfortunate, but it had to be. And, you know, I, I hope that people don't come down on us about it because it, there was nothing we could do. Our hands are tied.
Yeah, a lot of good projects. Marv? Thank you. Jason?
Yes, sir. I was just going to say, I, I always find it very meaningful to go through Veterans Day programs. I did again this year and I'm just so thankful for the people who put themselves in harm's way, even the ones that didn't fully realize what they're getting into, but found themselves in a position of protecting. I met some Vietnam and even Korean War veterans in the last few days. And I'm just very thankful for their sacrifice.
Thank you. Jenny?
I just want to make it aware to the public that the Our Saviors Lutheran Church is hosting a community Thanksgiving meal that's going to be offered to anyone in our community that either doesn't have a family or doesn't have a place to go for Thanksgiving, which I think is really nice of them to open their doors and provide. So they're going to have that on Thanksgiving from 11 until 1:00. And people can come in and sit together and share a meal, or you can pick up a meal to go if, if you're not comfortable coming in and having the meal, sitting down. They all, they also are looking for volunteers either on Wednesday to get prepared for it or Thursday actually, you know, serving it and, and giving out the meals. So you just have to call the church office at Our Saviors Lutheran if you want to volunteer for that. But also, you know, if you're new to the community or if you, you know, aren't able to travel or don't have a place to go, this would be a nice place to have a sense of community and share a meal. And for those that don't know, Our Saviors Lutheran Church is like right off of Highway 6071 on Third Avenue in Wyndham. So, and I'm sure there's probably more information out there, but just so people know, there is a place to go. And then wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and that I'm very thankful for the community I live in and the people that live here.
Thank you. Lisa?
I just want to thank everybody who worked on the election. It takes a lot of people, a lot of coordination, lots of time. And I think it's terrific, all the volunteers they got. And thank you for your service.
Thank you, Lisa. Steve?
Thank you to department heads for all the work they put into the budget. It's a long process. It started back in July with what Finance Director put together and went through. So thanks to department heads and thanks to the council for all the times that you put in. put in on this. I know it's a lot of long hours and a lot of detail to get through, but it's, it's well worthwhile in the end. So thank you for all of your work.
Well, Steve, thank you and your staff also for all that work on the budget. I think it's very well-prepared with information that the council needs. And so I am sure all the council appreciates that. A lot of work to do that. You and Cheryl do a great job and your other peoples, so appreciate that. With that, I think we're good for tonight. Thank you, as Jason said, to our veterans. Appreciate that. And everyone have a happy Thanksgiving. Adjourned by unanimous consent.